Hello lovely people. All you lovely, lovely viewers of LSB Film Productions, it's great to see you today. In Thetford, there's something really important happening. Thirteen independent people have decided to stand for council. Now, they're just ordinary people. So what they've done, they've decided that, you know, if they, if they want something done right, then the best thing to do is to do it yourself. And they've stood for council, they've put themselves forward. Now, that might seem to be quite a strange thing to do for some people. They're not standing for the Labour Party, they're not standing for the Conservative Party. So they don't have that structure behind them, that support mechanism. But what we do have is Jenny Hollis, who has been standing first as a UKIP councillor, was first elected in 2015, and then for the last four years as an independent councillor. So the knowledge that Jenny has from sort of inside the system, if you will, is going to be invaluable for these people when they do get elected. And we're hoping that all thirteen get elected. So hello Jenny.
Hello.
Good to see you.
And you.
So I got that right, did I? It was 2015 you first did?
2015, I was elected as a UKIP councillor for the Bodacy Award, some called it Budick Award. And I'd done four years and then 2019, I stood as an independent. Because for me, independent councillors are the way to go. You're not tied. And I have to say that there's only one group that do whip at town level. The others don't, so the Blues don't, but the Reds are.
Right.
And there's evidence of that as well. So independent is the way to go.
Sure, yeah, it's interesting you say that because at the emergency meeting at the Carnegie Hall, I believe one of the councillors there said there's no whip at town level. But, and they might not be in, you know, technically, but in practice.
Yeah, I mean, I could actually give you an example if you like. A lady councillor, ex-Labour, she has been chairman of the Cemeteries Committee for a long time. And I think it was 2020, we got her 2021 mayoral year. She was voted out as chair. When it comes to like the new mayoral year, you have re-elected chair people. And she was put out. Now, there's about five councillors on that, on that committee. It's a very small committee, same as the allotment committee. Now, she'd never ever been in the, in the red for the council. She had a set, we had a set forward-looking programme. Everything was going swimmingly, but she was voted out, which is democratic. Everybody has a right to do that. I couldn't understand why somebody that's been put, put a committee in such a good position should lose that spot. At the time, the then mayor for 2021 has never ever been to a cemeteries committee.
Right.
But working, and he blew the blue flag. By working alongside Labour, he actually come and used his vote. Because the mayor has the right to go to any committee they like and use a vote. They have a vote on everything. So it was a case of pendent out to get a party member, Labour Party member in. None of the works were ever done. It ended up a little bit in the red.
That sounds like Labour.
With no works done. And obviously the lady stood up and she said, this is wrong. She walked out of the meeting. I stood up and said, this is wrong. And a Labour councillor, quite right, he said to me, it's democratic. Yes, I believe in democrats. But why have you done this? And a few months later, that councillor actually come up to me and said, and my daughter-in-law was with me because we were trying to collect food for a family that we'd found had nothing. And he said, I made a mistake, I shouldn't have listened, I should have gone with my gut. I am so sorry, it won't happen again. So when you get a party member come up and say that, you know it's, and it was, it was whipped, you could tell. Council meetings, you can sit at council meeting and they all look at councillor Jeremy. Or he's on his phone. And then they're on their phone. And in some cases, they do go against him, but nine times out of ten, they don't. They are whipped and it's obvious to people that understand the system.
Yeah, I'm sure it's obvious to people watching now. If they're familiar with national politics, you can see with the party system there as well. So instead of having a local MP that's representing the local people in parliament, they're actually representing their party in the constituency. It's the wrong way around. And I think that's why these independent councillors are the way forward.
Definitely.
You know, they're, they're going to be there. The only reason they're there is to represent the people. It's not, they don't have any party allegiance or anything like that.
No, that's quite, that's quite right. And I mean, I'd say I'm a four years of, I stood as an independent. I was pretty much independent, well, with UKIP, it was UKIP Independence Party. So you were independent then. But this last four years for town council, the working together don't seem to be happening so much, you know. If you get elected, regardless of what state you are, you, you work with your officers. Because they are the ones that, at the end of the day, have the knowledge. And that, and Thetford Town Council, the officers and staff there, I would never have a knock because they are, they know what they're talking about. They, they, they can point them in the right direction. But when you get a certain councillor, keep on and on and on. And wanting to do this and wanting to do that, or making the overspend, we would take that from that pot because that's an underspend. We'll take it from that pot because that's an underspend. So at the end of the day, this thirty thousand pounds overspend from this leader of, well, this Labour Party member that sits on this committee and the deputy chair of that committee is also Labour and the rest of it, I think there's about two, two councillors on there that aren't Labour. And one's an independent and then one's a UKIP councillor. But where's this coming from?
Yeah, so the town's actually been spending beyond its means, has it?
Just that committee at this time, yes. And that's, I mean, I've never ever sat on a committee that's overspent, never, in my eight years on the council. So when it came up, there was thirty thousand pounds overspend and that's, that's got to be pulled from reserves and that. I mean, you can have a conversation, well, reserves for me, it's like good housekeeping, really. When you've got reserves, they are for that rainy day. If a serious incident happens with a building and you've not got that money in your pot, you can't fix that roof or whatever. So basically, it's good housekeeping. When you've got somebody that, you know, overspends all the time, this has a great effect on, on the people of the town. Whereas, and it is politically motivated. I will stick my neck out on that one, it is political motivated. Independents haven't got that. They're going to look after the penny pot, they're going to look after the people. And if you look after the penny pot, you are looking after the people. Because you're not going to get a thirty thousand pounds overspend. Why, the same councillor at the chair of that committee, when he was mayor in 2016, he overspent his mayoral budget, a mayoral allowance within six months. He came back to the council and he asked for money to be moved around. He went to different committees, you know, he bought wine glasses or something it was, I can remember. And he went to a committee and asked that committee to purchase them two boxes of wine glasses that the council didn't need. Because the ones the council had weren't good enough for him on his mayoral thing. I'm sorry, but this is people's public money raised. Regardless if it's through council tax, if it's through rents. You know, it's public generated money and people must realise is two boxes of glasses to satisfy somebody's ego really worth your council tax money being spent?
Yeah.
Is it? No?
It might not seem like a big deal in and of itself, but it's, it's what it shows about the mentality behind it and what their motivation is. There's not, the first consideration should always be the people of Thetford.
Yes.
And what they need. And also, these things that are being overspent on, are they things that the people are asking for? Or is it things that are coming from the top down?
I think we all would like to see a lovely flowery town with, you know, lots of flowers and that. But I think when you get so many bins and benches slathered around the town that, you know, and our flowers and you know, it'd be nice to try and get out and get some sponsorship from businesses for putting hanging baskets and that. It's, it's not so much the flowers that are costing the money, it's the watering of these plants.
The upkeep, yeah.
It is the general upkeep of it. So yes, I think we all would like to see a lovely looking town for people when they come in. But there's got to be a line on the expenses that are paid out. You know, you can either have it or go out and work. Same councillor I'm going to go back to when he was mayor in 2016. The council used to have, I was probably going to get a kicking for this. The council used to have a very generous sponsor for the town. Now, when it was time to renew, discuss, you know, the sponsorship, there was a comment, there was comments made that bring your, bring your receipt book for the thousand pounds. Okay, we're all sitting there thinking, what is this thousand pounds? But it turns out that this person had gone to this, this person that was these donors, sponsors, and asking for money and it was for his mayor's ball. So this sponsor has pulled out and said, well, that person's sitting on your council, we are not going to sponsor the town anymore. So that's activities for people of the town.
So the town loses out.
The town loses out because of the mayor's ball in 2016. I, somebody made a comment on Facebook, Terry Jeremy, everybody knows who I'm talking about, they know my feelings towards it. I don't make a secret of it, for mayor. And I said, somebody that spends their budget within six months, somebody else come back and, yeah Jen, you know, we can't afford them. He walked into a council meeting, said hello to one councillor, totally ignored me. And the councillor went, he's ignored you? Yeah, he will do. And he blatantly called me a liar. Called me a liar for saying that he'd overspent his budget. Everybody in that room knew, it's public knowledge, they know. I've asked him to prove me a liar. He, he's, he will, he says. I'm still waiting months on. I told him I've got the proof that I'm not lying. And he went, oh, I'd be glad when May comes. And I said, so will I, because I will speak out.
Yeah, yeah.
And I will speak out about it.
Yeah, so just going back a bit, so it's eight, eight years you've done as a councillor now.
Eight years.
Which is enough for anybody really, isn't it?
It is, what is, wouldn't it?
I imagine particularly if you're, well, first UKIP and then independent and you go into council and there's a lot of the councillors that are, sort of the candidates that are standing now, they're very enthusiastic, they're very upbeat, they want, they want to get things done. But if they turn up in sort of ones or twos as independents and they see sort of a mass of Labour and Tories, it's going to be very difficult for them to get things done, isn't it? Is that what you found?
Yeah, it will do because I think there's about four of us, four, five of us on there are independent. But the majority are.
Sixteen, sixteen at the moment, is it?
Yeah, I mean, um, I'd have to count out who, how many it is. It's, it's, it's a split, it's split between, like, we've got the one UKIPper and then we've got, I think it's about five independents on there. And then you've got your Tories and you've got your, I think it's five Labour on there now. It's concerning because when you see a committee that is dominantly Labour, they're out saying to people how hard up they are and they're going to speak for this and the other. Yeah, they go and spend that money. You know, it's a contradiction of, of what, what the old Labour, if you like, used to be.
So, I mean, the key thing is, is for these independent candidates, we need to get a lot of them over the line, don't we?
Definitely.
You know, one and two, they can certainly be the eyes and the ears of the people and they can tell people what's happening in council, but to get things actually changed.
You've got to have the majority of independents sitting around here and sadly, and I am going to say it sadly, we will lose some good councillors that are on a party. We will lose them. Which I would be sad to see them go. Because they do work in the background, they don't brag about everything. They don't walk around with a hivis jacket on saying who they are. You know, they do things continuously, so it will be sad, but vote the independents and get an independent on council. That is all I can say.
Absolutely. Well, they've already achieved one victory. And I was looking at the nomination forms for the different wards. And if the independent candidates hadn't put themselves forward, Labour would already have a majority on their council.
That's right.
Because the wards would have been uncontested and Labour councillors would have been able to just walk through. So they'd already have something like twelve out of the eighteen, there'll be eighteen seats now. They'd already have twelve of them. So the independent candidates have already made them fight for an election and given the people of Thetford the chance to have a vote. So hopefully, they'll get enough over the line to be able to make a difference.
That's right. I mean, for where I live, on 2015 election, nobody contested that, so Labour walked in on that one. Then I contested 2019, I obviously won that ward. But it's uncontested again, so Labour have now taken that ward back. If they get the control of this town and people might, oh, you know, she's lost the plot or whatever. If they get the control of this town, this town will be in trouble. And I, I love the town, but I am really worried about my, the elections. And I'm not the only one, there's others worried as well. And it's past experience with them. And mostly the fact that of the overspending, you know, you can't run a business or anything on overspending. I, I would rather have three pounds in my pocket from my council tax than a bunch of flowers in the town that's, you're going to get some, some little person or big person come around and keep ripping them up.
Yeah, I think, I think most people would agree with you on that one. It's, I think what you said earlier was a good point as well. That if we do want substance in the town, then why not go out to businesses and ask them to sponsor?
Get the sponsorship.
Get the sponsorship in instead of asking the taxpayer.
And I, I think with independents, I say myself as an independent, my friend who I work with that I've got to know through the council, Brenda, and she won't mind me mentioning her name. And we're both independents, she left the Labour Party because of going on. You know, she, in the end, she said, no, that's wrong. And she, her life was made hell basically. And she became an independent councillor for these last four years. We do things for outside the council, we don't call ourselves councillors actually. We go and do things for different groups and that, and we've got ourselves into something else now. But we go out and we go, we've, I mean, we're two old women, but we've got a gentleman and his, and his wife, a couple, that sponsor us for whatever we're going to do. We've got that regular sponsor and bless them, we, they are so helpful. It's a few pounds that we're, but they, you know, like, we've got the King's Carination coming up and we're doing bits with a certain group, which I won't mention. And we do things there, we done a Christmas party for thirty, for thirty children. And we gave invitations to the school so they could go in town and see. We raised a couple of thousand pounds. It can be done. If you haven't got that political outlook, you're, you're independent, you can go in and do it. And that's what we do.
Yeah, it's interesting you feel that you have to sort of take your councillor's hat off.
I take my councillor's hat off.
Before you can do that kind of stuff.
I do, I do, I take my councillor's hat off.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got, I'm going somewhere this evening at six o'clock. I've been invited, which I've said I'd love to go. But I made it plain to that group, please, I'm Jenny.
No.
Not the councillor, please drop the councillor off, yeah, I'm Jenny. And I've had the invitation back, which I'm going to this evening. I'm going to hopefully go in and, and do some work with them. But I've said I won't do that until I'm off the council because I don't want anybody to think, and it has been done with this group, that it's been used for political reasons or to better myself. I don't, I don't need to.
No, no.
I don't feel I need to. And I don't think any independent councillor should feel the need to make themselves look better. Be the person that's standing there supporting, that's speaking. Speak the truth, that's what people need, the truth. Not all these under-the-table whispers and, and things and then people get hit with it. They need to know from the beginning. Certain things you can't, everybody understands that, it's of a delicate matter or something, you can't do it. But important things, do it, let the people decide.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that that's a common theme that's coming out at the moment as well. Again, not just locally but nationally, that people just are getting a bit fed up with their so-called elected representatives who are supposed to be there to represent us. But what they seem to be doing is that they've got this idea in their head that they're actually ruling us and they come up with these ideas and it's all top-down. It's not people saying, oh, we'd like you to do this, please. It's coming down is being imposed from the top. And I guess that's been happening at the council level as well, isn't it, town?
Sounds like I'm picking on somebody. If you've got a good team, then you can work with your, and you work with the officers, it's so much can be achieved. And I say, town council have got these people there that do work hard, they go over the limit. And that's what independents need, that's where the independents side come in. And I'm saying, I'm going to actually say the Blues side as well because they don't. You don't push them and push them and push them, you don't phone, make phone calls when it's their days off. You don't email them and tell them that there's a bit of litter over there, you've got to go and pick it up because I've all tried and I've seen it, that's not what it's about. They're there, they've got all their legal information, they've got the do's and don'ts. You help them, they help you. And that's, it's mutual respect. And if you haven't got that, then you're going nowhere, the council will go nowhere.
No, no, you've got to treat them with respect, haven't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of people probably don't realise that as well. It's not just the councillors that are running the, the council, you've got the staff as well in there.
Yeah.
Doing a, doing a job.
Well, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, fantastic. So, I mean, what was it that first inspired you to get into politics and stand back in? Can you, can you remember back as far as 2015?
I can, because I still blame the person for it. And I'd just lost my partner. And I used to meet my friend down in town because she worked in town. So we'd go and have a coffee, we were down the river having a coffee. There was no seats, all buyers two on this table. And my friend said to me, let's go and sit on there, I've spoken to these before, they're a nice couple. And I sat with them and yeah, and then talking, and this gentleman, he had told them both terrible jokes. But you had to laugh because they were so bad. Bless him, talking with him, graduated getting to talk to them both, lovely, lovely couple. And next thing I know is, will you stand as a candidate for UKIP in the elections?
Yeah.
And that's how it started.
And that was the next eight years of your life.
That was, yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
But you think maybe now that you've, it's strange that you did have to feel that you had to take your councillor's hat off to be able to do charitable stuff around the town, which a lot of people would think would be what a councillor should be doing anyways. You'd have your councillor's hat on while you're doing that. But now that you're free of that, you can do more of what you want to do.
Yeah, that's right. And, and I've got to be fair, I feel a weight's lifted off me because it isn't easy to be a councillor. People think it is and you, people need to distinguish between which councils what, who's got what. You know, a town councillor, district councillor, Northern County councillor, they don't have the power to get you an NHS dentist. They don't have the power to save a nursing home from closing. You know, they can't save the NHS, that's all central government, that is not local. What you need to think on is the town and the people of the town. Because I've got leaflets, I'm a bit of a collector for, for election leaflets. So I've got quite a few different ones and newsletters that keep coming through my door. And I've kept them and I thought, but that's not possible, you can't do that. But if you're telling people, I mean, the latest ones, the bus service to get down on an estate, well, that was used in twenty nineteen, twenty, when there was a by-election. And it was used again on this leaflet for these two Labour councillors. They'd already been told that this is not going to happen. So why are they still using it on their leaflet to mislead people? It is not going to happen. I've spoken with the gas, uh, bus companies. I've, you know, I've spoken to different people and that, and it is not going to happen. Why mislead people? Don't ever mislead people.
Yeah.
Tell them the truth.
Making promises they know that they can't keep.
And that is it. And I have found that when it's party political politics and I say the town shouldn't be political, it's a case of take on something that they know they're not going to win. They know that just because they've got councillor in front of their name, they've got, they haven't got that power. You can't go to a, a business and say to them, I want this done, I'm a councillor. Because if somebody done that to me, I would tell them to move on. Please go. So they haven't got that power. But it's broken promises and if you stand on something you know you can't win, it's a case of, well, we did try. But you knew you weren't going to win it. But we did try. And people think, bless them, they've tried.
Yeah, yeah. I think the key thing as well with the independent candidates is just the principle that they're there for the people.
Yes.
And they're going to listen to the people and put the people's needs first above everything else, above party concerns, above personal concerns.
Yeah.
That's definitely the way.
And that is the way forward for, for the town is independent, independent council. Or the majority so that they have got that thing. And I say, a lot of people I speak to say the way forward is an independent council. If not for independent council, like it used to be years and years ago, the majority so that that part, the party politics can't come into it. And it's, and town has got very political these last four years.
Yeah.
But again, it's one individual that's, that's brought it forward.
And it switches people off as well, particularly with these broken promises. Again, looking at the figures, so the last election 2019, three-quarters of people in Thetford who were eligible to vote didn't vote.
It was a poor turnout.
Yeah, and I think that that suits the political parties because they're talking to ever smaller and smaller number of people. They need fewer and fewer votes to actually get in. They've got their little base of, of blue or red voters who are always going to vote that way. And that's, and that's not really democracy, is it? Because there's no real choice.
No, that's right. And I think with the amount of independents, and these are independent people coming in, has now maybe got people worried. But so far from what I've seen on interviews, you know, they've said the truth needs to be told. People need to know the truth. Yes, we can, everything is in the public domain. What can be. And but people do, and they, people do need consultation on major issues, you know, allotments or, I mean, that's a, a thing at the moment. People need that consultation, that communication. And if I've got twelve, thirteen independent councillors that I know are sitting in a chair that's going to speak for me and find out the actual background and because you have to know from the beginning to, to the, where you are, do that research on that matter and you've got your answers there. And you know, if you're capable of, of carrying it through. But it's, all I say to people is, when you vote, be very careful on who you're voting for. Because there's sheep in wolf's clothing there, wolves in sheep's clothing. Vote for somebody you know that will speak up for you, that's not going to lie to you and will support you. And that is it. And, and no politics involved, independents. You have, it, that is the only way to go, but make sure you vote.
Fantastic. Well, that seems like a good place to wrap things up. Thanks ever so much for your time.
Thank you.
So there are thirteen independent candidates. So there are thirteen independent candidates standing across Thetford. And it sounds like the best result would be if we could get a good bulk of those across the line. And retake Thetford Town Council, bring it back to the independents and bring it back to the people.